Good evening, I'm Jared Voorhees, President of the President's Council, and I'd like to welcome you to our annual Candidates Night. Before we begin, will everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our moderator for this evening is Mr. Glenn Lottman. We'd like to thank him for coming. I'd also like to thank the staff of Avenon Middle School and the custodial staff for providing us the opportunity to be here this evening in this building. Candidates Night is a forum, it is not a debate. We offer this night to allow you, the citizens of Woodbridge Township, the opportunity to hear the candidates' platforms and to hear their answers to questions regarding our school district. This will enable you to make an informed decision when you vote on Tuesday, November 5th. President's Council does not endorse candidates. This year, there are four candidates running for three seats on the board, and three of them are present here with us this evening. Each candidate will have two minutes to state his or her platform. The remainder of the evening will consist of additional questions that were prepared by the President's Council and questions from you, the public. All questions will be one and a half minutes or less after they are read. The night will end with a two-minute closing by each candidate. The forum is being recorded by TV-35 to be televised at a later date prior to the election. If you could please turn off all cell phones and devices. I will now turn over the program to our moderator, Mr. Glenn Lottman.
Alright, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start by, again, thanking the members of the President's Council for allowing me to participate in this great event. It truly is an honor to be the moderator for Meet the Candidates Night. Good evening, Mr. Sedana, Mr. Treebosser, and Mr. Velez. Unfortunately, the fourth person running, Mr. Owen, could not be here this evening, but we do have these three fine young men, so we will get started. The way this is going to work, I'm going to read at least nine questions this evening, and every member who's here today is going to have the opportunity to answer first, second, and third. So the first question, Mr. Sedana's gonna go first, then Mr. Treebosser, then Mr. Velez, and the second question will go Mr. Treebosser, Mr. Velez, Mr. Sedana, so on and so forth. So everyone has the opportunity to answer first, second, and third. So I'd like to start off by inviting the three candidates individually to give their opening statements. Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. I would like to thank President's Council for having us here. It's been a privilege to have served on the Board. Thank you to all the taxpayers in Woodbridge Township who voted me to be here. I hope and continue to work towards a better, a more equitable system, an education system, and I hope you give me the opportunity to do so again this coming term. So thank you all, and with complete grace and gratitude, I am ready for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Treebosser?
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. First of all, thank you very much to the President's Council for giving up their time to provide this opportunity for us to present ourselves to the public. From being on the Board for the three terms that I have been, I've learned to realize that a lot of people may not attend the meetings, but they certainly are interested in what's going on. And therefore, this opportunity is really grateful to be presented to all. I've been in Woodbridge School District for 27 years now. We've worked on many different variety of initiatives, not limited to, but including technology, phone systems, trying to provide a more equitable circumstance for all students throughout the community. We have been able to work hand-in-hand with the mayor, certainly in a effort to achieve the things that we have, outstanding facilities. We are working continually to improve our school district. When my wife went to Woodbridge School Districts, it was one of the top 10 districts in the state, and that is absolutely our goal. My teammates and I are laser-focused on getting the results for our community because we believe that that's what's most important. So, Mr. Lottman, have at it with the questions, we're waiting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Velez?
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. It's an honor to be here tonight, and I appreciate your inviting me to speak. My name is Joe Velez. We're running with Jonathan Treebosser and A.J. Sedana together. All of us have been on the Board, for at least myself, I'm seeking my second term, Jonathan, I believe, your fourth term, and A.J., the second term. I grew up in, I've spent most of my life in Woodbridge Township. I grew up in Woodbridge proper. I now live in Ford's with my wife, and I have two children currently in the Woodbridge school system. I myself graduated Woodbridge High School. I want to, I work with the Police Department. I've been employed for over 30 years with the Police Department. I'm very familiar with the town. I got involved with the Board of Education four years ago. If I could give back to the Township by working with the Board of Education, that's what I want to do. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, first question again, Mr. Sedana, if you would please go first. First question reads, "Many new and present Woodbridge Township residents are unfamiliar as to what being an elected member of the Board of Education entails. Please describe what some of your responsibilities would be if elected."
Speaking from, thank you, Mr. Lottman. Speaking from past experience, this one term, I can inform everyone very confidently that the Board of Education, the position on the Board entails a lot of details. As being a Board Member and as being part of such a big school community, as well as a district of the size that we are, there are a lot of moving parts that have to be taken care of, that have to be looked at carefully, not once but several times over by several people. And it's just, as far as roles and responsibilities are concerned, I'm on the Technology Committee, on the Curriculum Committee, and I'm also part of the Board operations as a whole. So it puts you in a place of understanding what our students need, and what our students are currently getting, and how we can bridge that gap.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Treebosser? "Many new and present Woodbridge Township residents are unfamiliar as to what being an elected member of the Board of Education entails. Please describe what some of your responsibilities would be if elected."
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. I've served the last two years as Board President, and have had the honor of sitting in on every committee and getting to recognize the amount of effort and time. It is probably the worst-paying job of my life and probably the most rewarding. We do have an opportunity to review every aspect of the school district from a financial, policy, and regulation perspective. Our goal and our responsibilities do not include micromanaging, staffing, evaluating, and things of that ilk. We are required to oversee that the administration is staying on course as far as providing a thorough and efficient education to the students, and to provide the necessary services to our community to help support the families and the students to be able to achieve their maximum potential. That is something that we, the three of us, have also been very concerned about, and we will continue to work hard on. It is an imperative opportunity for a Board Member to have the ability to have influence to make sure that the community and the students receive the finest education they can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Velez? "Many new and present Woodbridge Township residents are unfamiliar as to what being an elected member of the Board of Education entails. Please describe what some of your responsibilities would be if elected."
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. As a Board Member, we're broken up into committees. One of the committees that I'm chair of is Negotiations Committee. My experience as a police officer with the Union gives me some insight on contracts. I helped with negotiating the contracts for the employees. I'm also a member of the School Safety and Security Committee. My experience as a police officer has also helped with that. Majority of the responsibility comes with playing almost a go-between between the residents and taxpayers and the administration. Residents will approach me with a suggestion or a problem, and I will talk to the administration and see if we could correct the problem, or make a recommendation for any changes. But there's other facets of being a Board Member, but those are predominantly the ones that I'm involved in. Thank you, Mr. Lottman.
Thank you, sir. I'd also like to take a second to acknowledge other Board Members in attendance. Good evening, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Bourdain, and Mr. Harris. Good evening. Alright, question number two, Mr. Treebosser, if you would please go first. "What is a priority issue that you would like to see given immediate attention, and why?"
It's very difficult to pick a single priority, however, let me give a shot at it. We just implemented a brand-new all-day kindergarten, and we are absolutely starting to see positive results from that. We hope to have it make a significant difference in the way our students go into first grade and second grade, in that they are more acclimated towards spending a full day in school. People don't realize it, but it takes a lot of stamina to be a student. And one of the things that the all-day kindergarten has been able to provide is giving those students stamina. You'd think that all kids have an opportunity to go to preschool before starting in public schools, that just isn't the case. I think one of the things we want to focus is how we can gain the maximum amount of advantage from our all-day kindergarten program, to be able to provide kids with the absolute best opportunities to be successful in first and second grade. We believe that early intervention, my colleagues and I, that early intervention will have the most impact on students going forward. So I think that that will be our biggest challenge, is trying to figure out how we can provide better services and earlier intervention. Hopefully, our kindergarten program will enable us to accomplish some of those goals. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Velez? "What is a priority issue that you would like to see given immediate attention, and why?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. There's so many areas that you deal with when you're in the school system. The one that, if I had to choose one particular area, I'd say the safety of the children. We want to make sure that we're up on the technology, because as you know, technology changes quite often, that we have the best security equipment available. I want the parents to, when they drop their child off at school, for them to know that we're doing the best we can with security, and for them to feel safe. If they're not safe, they won't learn. Thank you, Mr. Lottman.
Thank you. And, Mr. Sedana? "What is a priority issue that you would like to see given immediate attention, and why?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. As my esteemed running mates and my team members so rightly put it, there are so many different aspects that require attention and priority. However, there's one thing that the entire Board is also, and I can't speak for them, but something that I would love to focus on is the right kind of symbiotic relationship between technology and curriculum. With all the tech that we have today and the devices, the ability, or rather, the response ability of a student has changed significantly even from 10 years ago, or even five years ago. Maybe not five, but at least definitely 10 years ago. So the method in which a student absorbs and retains a certain amount of knowledge and applies it concurrently has changed. And that has to do with how we use technology in the classroom and how we don't use technology in the classroom. So that's something that I would like to further explore and definitely, you know, get into the trenches with the administration and figure out what's the best course of action.
Thank you, sir. Alright, question three, and, Mr. Velez, it's your turn to go first. "How will you bridge the performance gap difference between the schools and our districts?" Again, I'm sorry, I'll read it to you again. "How will you bridge the performance gap difference between the schools in our district?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. Communication is key. I mean, most of the questions you ask, that communication would be an answer to them. We need to have the schools that are performing well communicate with their employees to communicate with the schools that are underperforming. If we have a good communication system between the schools, I'm sure that the lesser-performing schools would come up to the higher standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sedana? "How will you bridge the performance gap difference between the schools in our district?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. The performance gap between schools is much like diagnosing a health issue. There are a lot of details that need to be looked at in every aspect of running the school. So, as Mr. Velez very rightfully put it, communication is key. Fresh eyes, definitely. Also, the ability for the right kind of leadership with administration, marrying that with the right kind of administration in the building or the school itself, and that trickling down into the classroom with the teachers, and then also making our school community, the parents, aware of what's going on. Again, coming back to Mr. Velez's point, same thing, communication and leadership being flexible and understanding what works and what doesn't. What might work for one school might not necessarily be the best course of action for another school. And I think we are making steady and forward-going progress as we speak. It's, again, as I said, there's a lot of moving parts with a lot of different kinds of demands on the system, and that has to be taken into account. So you cannot break a system before actually making it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Treebosser? "How will you bridge the performance gap difference between the schools in our district?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. Woodbridge Township is a very unique community. We have a very broad socioeconomic and diversity throughout our community. And what we've really started to recognize, and actually, one of my fellow Board Members that happens to be here, Ms. Anderson, by speaking with her and recognizing some of the things that are going on in our community, we realized that we've always had the mindset of equality and making sure that everything was done the same. And what we've started to realize is that through high standards, broad perspective, equity is what's most important. We need to be able to provide for our community based on those economic and cultural differences, that everybody has the same opportunity to learn at the same things, and that they have the ability to be able to move within our township and have the same level of education provided for them no matter where they live. Currently, we are working on developing a system that is more driven by the needs of the section of the town, as opposed to being driven by a mindset of state testing. So if you're in one portion of town, you may need tutoring before school and after school, or you may need to have internet services. And if you're in another part of town, you may need something totally different. So my colleagues and I, and my fellow Board Members, are all looking to be able to provide a more equitable education for everyone who lives here. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four, Mr. Sedana, if you would please go first. "If elected, how would you make the Board of Education more approachable to all parents and allow for better communication between the Board of Education and the school community, especially those who lack internet access or do not speak English as their first language?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. Providing more access to the Board and being more approachable is something that my teammates and I have always strived for. That being said, obviously, there's a district website that has all the information needed for anyone in the township or otherwise to approach us. One of the things that I have seen and I'm still noticing is that within our school community amongst the parents, as well as maybe even otherwise within the students, there's a certain level of, I don't have a word for it, but I feel we're doing what we can for us to be approachable. If more needs to be done, it will be done, because we are not approachable. What I would do to change that is definitely something to do with technology, is maybe work on putting out video announcements, something that people can watch, maybe have translated subtitles, so that people from different backgrounds, different languages can also absorb the same information that is being put out there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Treebosser? "If elected, how would you make the Board of Education more approachable to all parents and allow for better communication between the Board of Education and the school community, especially those who lack internet access or do not speak English as their first language?"
Well, there are several things that we currently do now that I think will probably continue moving forward. We do have, the superintendent has a coffee meeting, which is an informal format for people to sit down and talk with him. Certainly, it's something we've tried for a couple of years. We're not getting the turnout that we want, but it keeps improving, and we're going to keep striving to get that to be better. We use our instant messaging service, and we do that, and we're able to communicate to parents through phones. We've also looked at providing a workforce that is more representative of the community. So we look to hire people that will be, if we're in an area of the town that hypothetically speaks Spanish, then we're going to look to hire people in that part of the town that are bilingual, so that they can communicate with the residents. So that way, people don't feel uncomfortable, or walk in and because their English skills are not what they feel they should be, that they would have to feel uncomfortable or ashamed of how they speak. So we're trying to be able to provide that link for the community with the schools, because it's so important for people who come into a community to be part of it, not just to be someone who's moving into a house, but someone who's intrigued, becoming involved, embedded. We're trying to make Woodbridge Township more of a stew that all works really well together and comes out strong at the end, as opposed to, this is the way we are, and you're going to have to conform to us.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Velez? "If elected, how would you make the Board of Education more approachable to all parents and allow for better communication between the Board of Education and the school community, especially those who lack internet access or do not speak English as their first language?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. Like Mr. Treebosser pointed out, we do have the superintendent meets at least once with every school in what we call Coffee Hour. We like that he's approachable to the families out there if they have any questions. This format right now should be on TV-35, 36. That will reach out to some people that way. Also, there's not a day that goes by that my daughters are in the call-school system now, and they'll get a handout from the school district advising them of different township events that are coming up with our contact information. Our website and social media is always updated. We have a pretty good system with that. And we'll work on, if technology becomes more available, if there's other ways to get out there, then we'll look into it. Thank you, Mr. Lottman.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. Question five, Mr. Treebosser? "The responsibility of a Board Member takes on many facets. As a Board Member, where do you feel your greatest allegiance lies? With the community, with the parents, the students, or the employees of the schools, and why?"
My loyalty lies in all of those categories. I have a responsibility to the taxpayers, the ones who don't have students in our school, to be economically conscious and to look for the best ways that we can provide the best service, because everybody knows that a strong school district provides better values in resale of your house and your property. I have a loyalty to the student population, because if we're not educating them to be successful, whether it be going to college, or using one of the other programs, whether it's getting a CDL, or going to a vocational program, or going to Lincoln Tech for one of the other programs that we offer, then we're not serving them. As far as the staff goes, if the staff doesn't feel that they're inclusive and part of our community, then we're alienating them. These people don't work from the neck down. Ideally, they work from the neck up. And if we don't make them recognize that what they say and what they feel adds value to the overall operation, then we're really not doing that. And as far as the municipality goes, you know, Mayor McCormick talks about this being the best community in New Jersey. And we feel, at least the three of us, and I would venture to say everyone else on the Board, is that our goal is to make this the best school district in New Jersey. And, you know, Mayor's a little bit ahead of us, but we're catching up, and we're going to continue to work on that till we do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Velez? "The responsibility of a Board Member takes on many facets. As a Board Member, where do you feel your greatest allegiance lies? With the community, the parents, the students, or the employees of the schools, and why?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. As Mr. Treebosser indicated, it's a slippery slope that you have to walk there. I myself am a member of pretty much all three of the categories. A member of the community, I have children in the school system, and although I don't work for the school system, I am a public employee. So I can see it from all those angles. You have to do your best at all, because if you ignore one particular group, you're going to fail. So you have to treat them equally. Sure, the students are probably, not probably, definitely the most important part of the aspect, but you have to keep everybody informed and everybody a part of the whole picture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Sedana? "The responsibility of a Board Member takes on many facets. As a Board Member, where do you feel your greatest allegiance lies? With the community, the parents, the students, or the employees of the schools, and why?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. This question is hard to answer. Again, as my running mates very aptly put it, all of the stakeholders in those categories and those groups are, without fail, necessary to be included. So I would say, I think it's a game of inclusion, of understanding that once we are including everyone in the same pool, we all realize that we are on the same page, which is basically having a great education for all those who live in our town. And I think there's not one person who would disagree with that statement. So as far as allegiances, allegiances are for opposing parties. I don't see anyone as opposing here. So my whole philosophy that I operate from is, we're on the same page. We're here for the same exact reason. We just have different chosen paths, but I think everyone needs to be included to move forward in a direction that is, as Mr. Treebosser said, that is heading us or putting us on the path of being the best district in the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question six, Mr. Velez? "When it comes to trying to introduce certain courses, such as a new language or an engineering class, there's a lack of a qualified teacher to teach a specific course. What will you do to attract the teachers necessary to improve the curriculum?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. We will have to, certain courses are hard to get instructors, and that's been a problem for some time now. We will have to use better advertising, better use of social media to put the word out there. We also recently made an adjustment to the teacher's contract, where we were able to offer medical benefits to new employees from another district, that if we wanted a qualified person, a lot of the times, they couldn't take the position with our district, because the contract prevented us from giving them health benefits in the beginning. The way the contract is written now, we're a little more flexible with that, and if we need a person that's in this particular field that we feel we need, we can offer them the medical benefits that in the past we weren't able to get to them. Thank you, Mr. Lottman.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Sedana? "When it comes to trying to introduce certain courses, such as a new language or an engineering class, there's a lack of a qualified teacher to teach the specific course. What will you do to attract the teachers necessary to improve the curriculum?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. As Mr. Velez very aptly put it, we have made it easier and more flexible for our administration to hire teachers and make it easier for them to be part of our school system. So that being said, I think there comes a state of flow, where a teacher has to feel the right kind of comfort, at the same time enough of a challenge to make it more satisfying and more fulfilling as a teacher in the classroom. And I think our student body and our school community provides that. And to be able to communicate that clearly to the right kind of candidate would become even more imperative. So I think we are heading in that direction, and we've taken steps to make the right changes for having more qualified candidates for courses that currently, you know, we can't offer because of not having qualified personnel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Treebosser? "When it comes to trying to introduce certain courses, such as a new language or an engineering class, there's a lack of a qualified teacher to teach a specific course. What will you do to attract the teachers necessary to improve the curriculum?"
Thank you, Mr. Lottman. That's not a simplistic answer, only because when you look at being able to offer courses, it's not about just filling a slot, it's about filling the slot with the right person. So we have to really look at it from a couple of different perspectives. We have to be able to offer the course to our students. We have to be able to find the right teacher that can teach that class in the specific building. And then we have to figure out how we can be able to present that teacher a competitive opportunity here that they would get in what may be viewed as a more prestigious district. So by the fact that we're interested in making sure So, by the fact that we're interested in making sure that our district, as I said earlier, is trying to be the best in New Jersey, we have to be able to offer those opportunities for our students. We can't let a full year go by not being offering them a engineering course or a language arts course or some other specific course because we can't find a teacher. So, what we have to figure out to do is if we have hypothetically an outstanding engineering teacher at Woodbridge High School, then we have to be able to leverage that teacher through our technology to be able to provide it to JFK and Colony High until we can find that right person. And whether that right person is by having our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources going to different colleges and networking with the administrators there to try and find the best candidates, or it's by having people who work in, let's say, a hospital who knows somebody, who knows somebody else. Because nowadays, with a 3.1% unemployment rate in New Jersey, we have to work on trying to network to find the right people. So, I think we're looking at a very broad perspective.
Thank you. Question seven, back to you, Mr. Sedana. One goal of the five-year strategic plan of the district was to increase opportunities for students who do not plan on attending college. What kind of opportunities have been implemented and what else would you like to see included?
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. There are a few things that we have implemented and I would like to see more only because I understand why and what other things that require, that people like to take up as vocation that might become a profession later on in their life. So, in that regard, there are a lot of things that, in terms of our trades, that I would like to see come back, you know, woodworking being one of them. I think at some point, and this is years ago, we even had something to do with mechanical engineering or even automotive engineering. We had, I think we had a CDL program? Yes, we did. Something for maybe plumbing and electrical, I don't know. These are things that we have to look at and make sure that we can provide for them without not having to stress the budget and the resources that we currently have on hand. So, definitely something that we're looking into. And we also have good partnerships with some of the universities to get university credit for some of the vocational work that is being done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Trebusser, one goal of the five-year strategic plan of the district was to increase opportunities for students who do not plan on attending college. What kind of opportunities have been implemented and what else would you like to see included?
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. As Mr. Sedana just said, we do have a CDL program where if there are students that wish to get their CDL license, which believe it or not, happens to be a very lucrative field right now, there's a tremendous shortage of CDL drivers. We have also formed a partnership with Cisco and they could get a Cisco certification. We've partnered with the vocational schools in the area, Middlesex County Vocational Schools, to be able to offer a very broad range of trades and things like that that the students can attend. We also have ROTC or Junior ROTC at the high school if there are children that wish to go into the military. We've also offered a Lincoln Tech program. I believe it's a nursing introduction program. So, we're always looking for different types of things. As Mr. Sedana brought up and Mr. Velez and I, we've all discussed, there is a whole generation that missed being a trade plumber, electrician, carpenter, painter, and things like that. And I think they've become quite lucrative positions as there is quite a shortage. So, we're also figuring out how we can make that available to our students that have those interests at heart. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Velez, one goal of the five-year strategic plan of the district was to increase opportunities for students who do not plan on attending college. What kind of opportunities have been implemented and what else would you like to see included?
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. As my two colleagues have pointed out, we were aware years ago that we should look into this. We made it one of our priorities to have available partnerships with vocational schools. As I said, the CDL program, huge success. And we're always open to other suggestions as they come up. Thank you, Mr. Lotman.
Thank you. Question eight, back to you, Mr. Trebusser. Another goal of the five-year strategic plan of the district is to increase parental involvement and community understanding. Do you feel that is important for local businesses to have vested interest in our schools? If so, what would you do to encourage that relationship?
Well, absolutely. A community, as I've said earlier, is based on, as the whole piece of the puzzle. It's not just one aspect of it that makes it valuable. You know, we work with the municipality through the MACE Commission and that is a program that was set up through the municipality to get local businesses involved with the school districts. We used to have Principal for a Day. We've changed the name recently and for whatever reason, it escapes me at the moment. Our RISE program has students that get placed in local businesses so that they can get an opportunity. We've also been trying to push to get students to go to the work-study programs so that they work, they go to school half a day, they get their curricular responsibilities accomplished, and then they go into the community and have a job. So, that way, when they're done with high school, if they so choose to go on and work as a career or they choose to go on to college, they have experience.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Velez, another goal of the five-year strategic plan of the district is to increase parental involvement and community understanding. Do you feel that is important for local businesses to have a vested interest in our schools? If so, what would you do to encourage that relationship?
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. Yes, I totally agree. The businesses should be involved with the students. Like I said, local businesses, it's a win-win. It's a win for the Board of Education, it's a win for the students, it's a win for the businesses. If the businesses, with the help probably of the PTOs in the schools, they have partnerships there where an event, I was, there's been events on Main Street with the local businesses, with the children through the township and the Board of Ed. There's been events on Nebrunso Avenue. It's great that the businesses get involved and then the people who live locally will support the businesses in return. It's good for all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Sedana, another goal of the five-year strategic plan of the district is to increase parental involvement and community understanding. Do you feel that is important for local businesses to have a vested interest in our schools? If so, what would you do to encourage that relationship?
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. I think it's imperative that local businesses get involved with our schools. Also, have the ability for parents to be able to get involved themselves as well. Again, coming back to the point of inclusion, the more we include the people of our town and our school community with what is happening, the better it gets. There's a certain congruence when it comes to the mindset of the school community. Being a small business owner myself, there's obviously an economic advantage because your name gets out in the community. Beyond that, I believe and I firmly believe in learning through osmosis, being in the company of. So, for example, if one of our students wanted to take up the vocation or the profession of being a plumber and was able to maybe do a work-study program with a plumbing company with the right kind of supervision, I think if that student were to go to a plumbing job and understand how everything works and learns and sees what code is, what regulations are, what safety is and how the job is done, I think that would be a wonderful opportunity for anyone to learn because it would be right in the field. So, that kind of work, I think, is missing nowadays. So, I think it would be a great, great thing for local businesses to get involved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, question number nine, Mr. Velez, if you'd please start us off again. Please tell us one vision you have for our school district and how you would accomplish that vision.
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. The, it's so many things that we could improve on, but one of the things that stands to me, it stands out to me would be upgrading our aging schools. Some of them are 100 years old. So, with the help of the township and the Board of Ed working together with the council and the mayor, they're seeking out funds to upgrade some of our older schools, replace the schools. I mean, right now, we got a brand-new Ross Street school. I did a tour of it. It's absolutely beautiful. Anybody who went through that would be impressed. We're upgrading Woodbridge Middle School and we have plans for more improvements and upgrades. So, that would definitely be my vision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sedana, please tell us one vision you have for our school district and how you would accomplish that vision.
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. Mr. Lotman, when it rains, water doesn't just appear from the sky. There's a lot of things that happen. There's a low-pressure system, high-pressure system, collides with each other, a whole bunch of stuff that I learned in science class that creates a certain kind of atmosphere for it to start raining. So, my vision for our school district is to create the right kind of environment and climate for any student to reach their fullest potential, whatever it may be. So, it's not about just one thing. It's not about just facilities or just the teachers and the staff and the faculty. It's not just about how much money can be put into a particular kind of technology program or, it's so many things. Again, there are so many moving parts. So, it's creating the right kind of climate and environment where the student and the teacher in the classroom can reach their fullest potential. If that means going to college, great. If that means taking up a profession right after high school, that's wonderful. If that means going to one of our armed services, armed forces, or joining the police force or becoming a firefighter, whatever it may be, we're all here for that one singular reason. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Trebusser, please tell us one vision you have for our school district and how you would accomplish that vision.
I've got a really broad vision. My vision is, as I said before, I want to see our district be the best in the state. And there's a lot of moving parts to make that work. As Mr. Sedana said, we have aging buildings, so we have to address that. We have to be able to provide equity to all of our students so that, as he also said, that they can all be successful and achieve their maximum goal. We have to figure out how to get our community more involved and to have our parents, to have PTOs that are vibrant and interactive and energetic with our community instead of having a PTO that exists of three parents. We have to have a clear vision and a straight path, which I think the current board that we have now has that vision. And I think they recognize the importance of us all moving in the same direction. And, you know, this is a big, big ship, so it doesn't turn on a dime. So, we have recognized it, we're stabilizing it, and we're moving it to the correct direction. Our goal, hopefully, the next time we sit up here to have this conversation, is that we are the best district in the state of New Jersey, if not, at least in the top 10. That's pretty much my vision.
Thank you. To tell you gentlemen our pros because I think I've been doing this for at least a dozen years, the fastest it's ever gone. So, you guys are professionals. At this time, I'd like to ask each one of you to provide your closing statement. So, Mr. Sedana, if you'd please go first.
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. First of all, it is, again, a privilege and an honor to be here. So, I would like to thank President's Council once again for having us here, to all the people in our audience, fellow board members. Thank you for being here. First off, it is wonderful to be part of a team and have them here with me right now. Whether it be board members or fellow running board members, teammates, I could not have asked for a better one. I would also like to thank the community at large who has given me the opportunity and voted me into office. It's a privilege and that's all I can say. My fellow board members, that some of them here are present in the audience and some who are not, it's, again, wonderful to be part of the board and to be able to communicate freely and openly without having any kind of barrier. I would like to set a higher standard for everyone across the board in a way where, again, as I said, it allows our students, our faculty, our administration, our leadership to head in the right direction and have everyone, especially the students, reach their highest potential. That being said, I also recognize the diversity in our district. And it's simple, but it's not easy. And it's, and that's okay. A challenge is always accepted. So, thank you very much again and hope to see you guys soon.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Trebusser.
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. Well, first of all, as Mr. Sedana said, we are running as a team. Mr. Velez is position one, I'm position two, Mr. Sedana is position three. I've been on the board for three terms. I'm looking for a reelection. There are quite a few things that we have started over the years and I don't think we are even close to being finished. And it is absolutely an honor and a privilege to serve my community. As I said, I want our district to be the best in the state and I don't think I can stop till we are. And I do see that on the horizon, it's just a question of getting there. I'd like to thank the President's Council as well. I think opening forums like this gives the parents the opportunity to become more familiar with us and do it in the privacy of their home where they may feel more comfortable and may feel less self-conscious about whatever it is they may feel self-conscious about. The board, the administration, and the municipality are working in concert with one another to try and get us to where we need to be. We will continue to work on that. And should you support us as you have in the past, we will continue to give us our best effort and we will continue to make you proud of us as I like to believe you already are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. Lotman. As I said before, I'm very proud of Woodbridge. I live here, I work here, I have children in the school system, I have a large extended family with nieces and nephews that are also current students in the system. I care about what happens in this town. It's very important to me. The ballot, if I would like to continue to serve with the blessings of the voters, on the ballot, I'm number one in the E column. Jonathan is number two in E column and AJ is number three in E column. When you go into the booth, the Board of Education, it should be on the lower left-hand side. It's a little confusing, it's easily overlooked. So, please look for column E and vote for E1, E2, and E3. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Velez. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'd like to thank everyone who came out this evening for this great event. I'd like to thank the three candidates for coming out this evening. They're very busy. So, for you to come out, share your ideas with us and for everyone who will be watching, it means a lot. So, thank you very much. And of course, I'd like to thank the ladies of the President's Council. As I said before, I've been doing this for at least 12 years, I think even, you know, maybe even 15. And I do enjoy, it's an honor, being up here to moderate. I hope I can come back for another year or so. Please, unless you have someone better than mine, please pencil me in. Actually, no, pen me in so that way you can remove me. All right? And for everyone watching, please remember Tuesday, November 5th, it's a huge day, Election Day, please come out and vote. Our students need you, our schools need you, your voters need you. And when you do come out, please don't forget to bring a non-perishable food item as our school district and township will be participating in Casta Can, which will help fulfill our food pantry. Thank you very much. Thank you.